I'd like to call the December the 10th, 2012 work session for the Frankford Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to have the clerk to please call the room.
Mr. Wyler.
Here.
Mr. Heden.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Here. All present and coming forward. Appreciate your presence, everyone who's here. First item on the agenda are citizens' comments. Any citizen can come and speak on any subject that they'd like to speak on. We'd like to request it be about five minutes if you do come up and identify yourself and stand at the microphone. Any citizen wants to speak, come forward.
Yes, sir. How y'all doing? I'm Richard Sandifer. I own the lead performance up on Myrtle, and we've got a problem with the curb. The new ones they just installed. I've called everybody that, you know, I've talked to the street department, Jeff Hackbart, Tom, somebody that's an engineer, and nobody seems to want to do nothing. Well, now I've got two wrecker companies refusing to tow cars to me because they're tearing their trucks up. We had one that smashed a fuel tank and been a step up on it. He said he will not tow another vehicle to me. I can't. I'm, I don't know what else to do. So, I got pictures, I got pictures of an '04 Pontiac GTO, and you can clearly see it dragging the ground, you know, and it's ridiculous. I told the guy about it when he poured it, and he blew it off like it didn't matter. So, I don't know what, you know, so I'm asking y'all to help me get this curb fixed.
Yeah.
All he want, the engineer and Jeff and then the guy that poured it, they want to speak of ADA regulations. I understand this, but at the same time, if you look at other parts of the curb down Myrtle, some probably meet the standard, some don't. You know, there's other businesses there, and none of them have a sidewalk, so why does mine have to have it? You know, the business which used to be Trading Post Furniture, their driveway is slanted about like this. Why can't mine have some sort of slant to it to get rid of this junk and drop?
I'm not familiar with the particular curb that you're talking about. That's Tom.
It's the first axle driveway to Rock, you know.
I know where you're at. I don't know what the shit is.
Yeah, okay, Tom, come up, please, yeah.
Yeah, we went and looked at it. It's right in Myrtle. When you first try on Myrtle, it's on your right, and we redid a lot of those sidewalks down through there, and this was one of them. I know that he called and complained. We sent the streets out there to look at it. I thought it was resolved. Apparently, it's not. So, we can, we can go back and look at it again and see. We have to maintain some amount of lift there or the street water will make the turn and go down towards, towards him.
That's what me and you had discussed on the phone.
Yeah, we don't want water rushing down towards his business either. So, we'll look at it and see what we can do there.
Yeah, but if you look at, not to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
But if you look at the factor of it, like if this was the end of the sidewalk beginning of my entrance, there's a drain right there. Any water coming down that street is going in that drain. I've been there thirteen and a half years. I've never flooded. I've never had a curb like that.
The other thing we'll have to check, too, is how close that drain is to his entrance.
Yes, because that's another issue.
If that drain box is right there, you can't dive down as quick. But we'll look at it.
When they finished, they left a big jump from the sidewalk to that drain. It's that tall. I have pictures of that. It's on camera. I can't just hand you the picture, but, but I got pictures of it, and Jeff even agreed. It's a potential lawsuit for the city. Somebody trips over a curb, I'm assuming they will sue, you know, walking.
Right.
Now, that's none of my, you know, it's not my part.
That's the whole purpose of redoing the sidewalks, is to take care of the trip hazards. Again, I thought it was resolved, so I'll go out and look at it tomorrow.
Okay. Will you just email us, too, if there's anything, any other concerns or anything?
Okay. Yeah, because that was one of the issues, something about the flooding, but there's a drain right at the bottom of the hill, too, in my parking lot. Because once you get down in my parking lot, the hill's a pretty good hill drop, but then my business, my garage building sets up from the low spot of the parking lot. And like I say, I've been there thirteen and a half years. I haven't flooded, you know, outside of the roof leaking, but that's not.
All right.
Yeah.
Is it all?
Yes. Tom will be in touch with you.
All right. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, lady.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comment? Okay, let's move on. I want to like to ask the commission, if we can maybe adjust the agenda just slightly. You notice down in a new business. It says, "Proposed KSU Scholarship Program by Joy Jeffries," and she's here, and I think maybe the time could change something. Would you all agree to let, put her up there, move her up now instead of prior, any opposition to that?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Jeffries, would you please come forward?
First of all, thank you all for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I think that we're all appreciative of the university and the economic impact, and I know that Mrs. Enman from the Chamber of Commerce has the economic impact analysis, has copies of those if any of you have not seen that and you would like to see that. But I'm sure that we're all aware of the economic impact value of the university to us. Dr. Seis came here a year after I did, and I have watched what she's done to truly make this Frankfort's University, and she's very committed to that goal. And you were able to sell the old federal building to the university to be the on-land site for the science boat, and there's $350,000 left on that loan. And I would love to see the commission wipe that debt out and allow them to use that. What Dr. Seis would like to do is, and I think that, I think that Commissioner Flynn has given you all the draft information that I made available to her, and what I would like to do is to forgive that, ask you to forgive that loan as an appreciation for what the university does to the city. And also, a side benefit of that is that this will create a scholarship fund for local kids, not just the city schools, but the county, the two county high schools also. But there's another piece to this. I think that that's a wonderful thing of really bringing the university and the city together. But I think there's another piece of this. They have been so involved with riverfront development, and Dr. Seis and I were privileged to go down to the boat company to see the science boat, and I have seen it, and it is a boat. It is done. They were putting in paneling and windows when we were there in November. It is complete now. It will be brought to Frankfurt in May, and we will have a ribbon cutting for it in the first of June. And this, we are privileged for about 60,000 schoolchildren to come to Frankfurt every year. And I truly believe that within a decade, we will have as many schoolchildren coming to see this science experience as we will coming to see the state historic sites. That is not to say they would have to choose one or the other, but I think that this has the economic possibility of overnights for schools. And I, I know that there, the, the science boat has been delayed, but I can assure you that the delay has not been on the part of the university. It has been on the part, first of all, the boat company went out of business. They went bankrupt. And then, secondly, they have just dealt up one side and down the other with regulations from the Coast Guard. And that is finally, they've worked out all of that. But I realize this is a little bit outside the realm of tourism, but it's not outside the realm of the, the riverfront development. And I do believe that the university purchasing that building and committing to that science boat was a real turning point for riverfront development. And at any rate, I don't know whether you have any questions or if I could answer them, but if you do have any questions, I would either defer to one of my colleagues sitting here or try to answer it myself, or if we don't know the answer, we will find out and get back with you. Yes, Commissioner Wyler.
I just got a question about the timeframe. Is there any particular urgency or is there a deadline by which this decision needs to be made?
No, there is not a deadline from when it's made. To be perfectly honest, I wanted to get it on so that you all could have the opportunity to do it before you left. I know, Commissioner Wyler, you've been very active with the riverfront development, and honestly, I just thought that it would be, and Mayor Graham has been involved with the riverfront development since we started with the riverfront development, and I just thought it would be really, I thought it'd be really nice for this commission to be able to do it. That was really my motivation for, there is no, this is not being pushed by the university. Actually, to tell you the truth, I'm pushing it more than, than Dr. Seis is. But they have agreed to match the, the $350,000 that's left on, on the loan. The university would put that money.
These local, local scholarships?
Yes.
They, the forgiveness of this debt is required for these scholarships to even be put out to the community?
I don't know that that's the case at all. I, I have not heard Dr. Seis say that whatsoever.
Okay.
She's wanting, she's been wanting to start a scholarship fund for some time. No, no, I, I, do you know, if that's, I don't, I've never heard her say anything to that. I've never heard her say anything to that, in fact. And the only urgency was on my part, not the university's part.
Appreciate it.
Well, I, I did have a question. It was about the scholarships. I know sometime back, KSU had scholarships for local students. Do they not offer those anymore?
I think they are in a larger pool with just general students, with anyone in need. These would be set specifically for local students.
Well, that's what I was referring to. I thought they had.
I'm not aware of that.
And like I say, it, I know at least within the past 10 years, I think I've.
I, I, I don't know how to answer you, but I would be more than happy to find out about that. If there are already existing scholarships.
Right. Would this be replacing an existing program would be a question I have.
Yes, because if it's for apples for apples, yeah, that's a very good question, Chief.
Okay, Commissioner Turner.
Troy, thank you so much, and I'll just say that I think this is a nice idea and a good partnership effort that we can partner with Kentucky State University going forward. But I wanted to ask a quick question. It says that scholarships awarded each year will be on a first-come, first-served basis up to $100,000 each year until the total fund is exhausted. Do we, how many scholarships roughly would that be per year? How many, how many kids per year would be able to take advantage of this?
I don't know that either, do you, darling?
Sonia.
Sonia, I know you, Sonia.
No, well, I think you have to find out.
Yeah, I can ask that, too. How many? Well, one thing I had on my list of questions that I can't believe I hadn't asked Mary already was, I was curious why she wouldn't, and I am going to ask her this, why she wouldn't put it in a foundation so that you were only, I would rather personally see them do less scholarships and keep it in an annuity so that it was going forward. And I did think of that, and I was contemplating asking her about that because then it wouldn't be gone when the $700,000 was gone, which could well be the pro, the situation, Chief Wellhite. That might be that they had X number of dollars in there and it had been exhausted. That, that could be the, I need to do some homework, don't I? And I'll be happy to do that.
Excellent.
Yeah, okay.
Any other commissioner want to ask a question? So, you're going to get back?
I will. Yes.
All right. Then that would give us the commission a chance to study this.
Yeah, I'll get the answers to those questions and email that to you.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, now we're down to discussion of the tentative agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Question has a tentative agenda in front of him. Are there any questions or comments or any additions? I think Sue let us off the hook a little bit on this one.
Yeah. This is just a, this isn't important, and it's just a personal indulgence, but this meeting is going to be three of our last meetings. Pardon me? This meeting is going to be, the, the tentative agenda is for three of our last meetings. It's Mayor Graham's last meeting and Commissioner Turner and myself. And just as a personal indulgence, I guess I would, I would just appreciate having the opportunity to, I don't know, I'm sure we all would, have an opportunity to just make some closing statements, thank you, farewell, but being a special called meeting, even something that benign might need to be added to the agenda if we were going to, if we were going to do that.
So, we say, "Sign your data."
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put that in there.
Yeah, thanks, man.
Okay, you don't come in? Okay. Right, then the next item is the City Manager's report and staff comments.
Well, any discussion items I have, we're going to talk about a little later on, so we'll go ahead to staff reports. Chief Posich, do you have anything from the Fire Department? Finance, Mr. Dawson? Parks?
No.
HR, I guess we'll be talking later on. Planning and zoning, tomorrow, tomorrow is a meeting on the Form Base Code?
Yes, sir.
And that will be here?
Yes, sir, 5:30.
At 5:30? Mr. Bradley?
Nettin.
Congratulations on your interim position, sir.
Yes.
Interim Public Works Director. Interim Acting Helper Police Chief Deaton, anything?
No, sir, we're good.
Okay. IT, Bobby Rippey?
No, sir, we're fine.
All right. Sue, you'll get your, you'll get your chance on the agenda, thank you. We're back at Special Projects. Mr. City Attorney?
Just one item, and that is, we have continued to attempt to get CSX to revisit its decision on the, on the proposed pedestrian bike trail. I wish I could say they were being responsive and getting back with us immediately. Sent the letter and then left at least one phone call, so we're continuing to work on that, and hopefully we'll get some kind of response within the next week or two.
This is, thank you for that update. This is probably too late in the term for us to even be asking this question, but just so that we and the next commission are aware of all our options moving forward. Can we legally condemn that land in the interest of public safety?
I think that we could. I would need to double-check that just because it's, sometimes where you're talking about land is regulated by the federal government, different issues arise. But that's certainly something that we could look at if all other avenues fail.
With, without objection, can we just, could I ask you to go ahead and just do some preliminary? Just give us your preliminary opinion on that? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
This is more for you all's information, new commissioners.
That's staff reports. Mr. Meyer?
All right, so now we're down to old business, and see, we have the Green Vision End of Year Update. Mr. Scaff and Tom Bennett.
Back, I believe it was August, Jeff Hackbart and I were appointed to sit on the Green Vision Committee, and it's been interesting, a lot of stuff going on. In the last meeting, which was several weeks ago, the issue that came up was funding part of the, I guess for lack of a better term, moderator's time and, and his assistance in the development of the sustainability plan and the, just overseeing the meetings. Out of that, the, the Bluegrass Tomorrow, which he works for, came up with a memorandum of agreement, which I frankly, I had hoped to have earlier than I did, but it came to me late Thursday night, and I've already forwarded a copy to the city attorney for him to review. I want to pass out a copy to you all tonight, and I've got a copy for the new members of the commission also. They would like a commitment sometime in January. Unfortunately, the date they want is prior to the next voting meeting that we'll have, but, but I think we can work around that. The purpose of this is to give you all an idea of what's going on and to provide comments that can be incorporated into this document. And so with that, and Tom, if you've got anything else you want to add?
No, sir.
I don't know that there's any specific timeframe, I'd say, other than our next meeting is, I think, the second week of January.
Yes.
I think it's the second week. You've got a copy.
I have a copy, sir.
And you've got a copy. And obviously, if we can get comments back to them, the sooner the better. Obviously, we're not the only entity that's reviewing this. Fiscal court, the plant boards, both city and county schools, as well as KSU and the Commonwealth, so they'll, I'm sure all the attorneys will have fun with this. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I say the ultimate goal in this long-term is to develop a sustainability plan for the community, but, you know, that's still quite, quite some way off. The primary purpose of this document is to, I say, retain Bluegrass Tomorrow, and the term they use in here is either project or program manager to help us move forward with the sustainability plan. And if you have questions, feel free to call me, email me. You can send me comments or rob comments, and then we'll make sure that they get forwarded back to the appropriate folks that are actually putting this together.
I've got a couple of questions. First, a couple of comments. There's just a.
A couple of typos.
Number of typos, yes. Yes.
Well, I'm not going to hash through those then. Am I correct in understanding that, that the project manager, who would be tasked with providing leadership and coordination of short and medium-term initiatives as defined by the party's principles? You talk about putting together a plan for the community. I assume this would include some energy-saving plans for our individual bodies?
That, I think, is yet to be determined. I mean, I don't know that we know what that plan's going to encompass at this point. I would see that probably as one of the functions of the program manager is to help us determine exactly the broadness or the narrowness of that sustainability plan.
Well, this is ultimately a decision that's going to have to be made by the next commission, obviously.
Yes, and I say I've got copies for the, and I encourage them to provide me comments also.
I do, I do appreciate the fact that the ball is, is rolling on this, though. I know that, and in light of the fact that, that we're not hiring a sustainability coordinator or outsourcing a professional to coordinate our, you know, goal saving and energy savings within city government, within county government, the plant board, this seems like this could be, this could function as a, as a cheaper kind of watered-down version of, of that position, which under the circumstances I would favor. I think, obviously, we'd prefer a coordinator, but this doesn't, this doesn't require anybody on staff.
Right.
I guess the, the only real question I have, and this is for everybody's information, including the information of the new commissioners, considering the fact that a lot, that some of these duties are very similar to what was written in the job description for the sustainability coordinator. The, the city had, you know, we established a job description. That person would be tasked with doing a lot of what is referenced in this document.
Right.
We budgeted $20,000 for that position that will go unspent. I guess the question is, it looks like these expenditures would be less than that, would be less than what we've got budgeted.
The, the discussion we had was basically an annual fee of $60,000 a year plus expenses.
Right.
Shared by? When we got into it, the discussion came up of the fact that we deal with fiscal years, not calendar years. So, what you'll see on here is a $30,000 commitment. The, the only part I'm a little unclear of is, is in the meeting, I was under the impression it was going to be spread across all the entities involved. The way I read this, it reads, certain parties, some but not all parties shall contribute. I don't know who those some and not all are.
Right.
But basically, it would be $30,000 from January through July, or excuse me, through June 30, and then in July would be the start of another. But he's essentially setting this up as a six-month period.
Right.
At $30,000 per six months.
Sure.
And again, there's always the option, again, the way this is written, 60-day notice, any, any entity can bail out.
Well, assuming that that 60 gets split at least three ways, that's what we are prepared to spend on a coordinator position. 60 split, split three ways to 20 apiece.
Right.
Which is why we only have 20 budgeted. Assuming that this gets split at least three ways and preferably more, then it would, it would seem that we already have in our budget the funds to do this.
Funding source, correct. But again, I don't know who that some but not all are.
Sure.
I don't, I don't know if that's two or if that's, apparently not all seven, otherwise they would say all. So, I don't know if it's two to seven.
Well, that obviously needs to be answered, but if, if it's going to be split more than three ways or more, then it's just, it's good to know that that wouldn't require us to dig up any.
Correct.
Any extra funds or file a budget or anything like that. We've got that much, the city not spent.
Or even if that's a rotated base, like every six months, certain entities are paying.
Sure.
Need clarification.
Any other committees question? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did well. Mr. City Manager, next one here is search update.
One of my favorite topics.
Right.
Each of the commissioners and the incoming commissioners have scored the candidates, the 27 candidates that Mr. Donahue and I put in the package for consideration. Mr. Donahue has come up with a scoring list, and of course, at this point in time, we want to protect the confidentiality of the applicants in case any of them are employed anywhere else, but we, we do need board guidance on, on what the cutoff is, how many, how many people you'd like us to screen, you know, how, how much do we go on expenses in bringing them in? Do you want us? Do you want somebody to screen them before you screen them, or do you want to screen X number? We're just looking for some guidance here. Mr. Donahue can give us a...
Pretty much covered everything I was going to say, I think. I do believe that the applicants deserve some confidentiality at this point. Some employers don't look particularly well, and their employees looking for other employment. We don't really know if everybody that applied in August or September is still out there. So we do kind of, I believe, need to talk about, and it's hard to get into that discussion without talking about individuals.
Right.
And their scores. So maybe at the end of this meeting, we could just, we could get into close and talk about some candidates and what you want to do next with those candidates.
Now, I think one thing that Mr. Moore indicated earlier was, it would be all right to talk about that, but the process probably should be in an open session when we discuss how we want to do the process, like how many candidates, and do you want a team of city employees to screen them before the board screens them, or would the board like to screen them all, and what would be acceptable dates to bring these candidates in? There's a lot that goes into it that, you know, a search form would have done for us at some point in time, but certainly, there's some legwork that needs to be done.
And the candidates and their qualifications and their geographic location come into play in that discussion as well, I think. So, like I say, it's kind of hard to get into, there's some overlap, I think, between process and candidate pool.
Well, that...
You might handle it different if you're talking about people that live 600 miles away versus people that live 30 miles away.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what I was going to say, Mayor. If we could, after we do the, if there's going to be any discussion items, I don't know, then we could go into closed session and look at the applicants, and then if we, that might help us, when we come back in and talk about a process, if we're talking about, if we do a process first, it may be difficult.
Be difficult, I think, with the people out there that just would be on the commission.
If we could look at the ratings and then come back and talk about process.
Yes.
Because things might be really easy.
I agree.
All right, thank you, buddy. Is there any other old business?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have old business, I have new business.
Okay, we just get any more old business?
I've got a couple of pieces of old business.
Okay.
One, I was just wondering if there was any update available on the Human Rights Commission? I know that the folks are going to check with the, check with the county to see how they were feeling about that.
We do have some information.
The one thing that I did is I contacted the deputy judge and did, you know, get a copy of the ordinance that they enacted years, I think, back in the '70s, and that's still on the books, but there's been absolutely no activity from them, you know, for over 10 years as well.
So it's still active and hasn't been...
Well, it, they still have the ordinance on the books, but I would not call it active.
Sure, sure.
Do we know any interest in if the county has any, we might talk to them, the judge and stuff?
I've not talked to them about that issue.
Yeah, okay.
Probably something to be dealing with.
And there's nothing that we can do now to keep the ball rolling on that?
Okay, if you have another one, you say it, call.
Yeah, I've got some, I've got a question about the audit, and about another comment that's been made in the, in the paper lately about it. Where did the audit go? In a nutshell, there's been this, sorry, I've got two or three old audits with me right here. Yeah, this is the one. In a nutshell, there's been this, you know, this claim, despite the fact that the audit shows a surplus, that the city actually enjoyed a slight, about a $300,000 deficit. I would challenge that contention. Where's the page? I'm sorry, I don't even have it. In a nutshell, I guess what my question boils down to, in essence, and to paraphrase this, what the finance director told the newspaper is that if you count all the money we spend out of the reserves, and you don't count all the money we put back into it, then we have the deficit, which is undeniably true, I think everybody can agree that's true, I would, I would say that's a little misleading and irrelevant. I mean, for example, if we, if we don't count all the money we spend, and we do count all the money we put in, then we could easily claim a multimillion-dollar surplus. Now, we all know that's just as misleading and irrelevant as the comments our finance director made to the, made to the press. The only thing that actually matters is if you tally everything we take out and compare that to everything we put in, do we have a deficit or a surplus? According to the, according to the audit, we obviously put more into the general fund than we took out of it. There's a little, there's a little trick in these numbers, though, which is that, and this is a question I've got for Steve. It seems, it seems, Steve, that you're not counting the $300,000 we get from the sewer fund. It seems that when you're calculating this deficit, that it doesn't include that $300,000 from the sewer fund. Is that...
Mr. Dalton, do you please come up?
Yeah, you're going to have to come up for this. I just, I will note that Steve confirmed that he's not counting, he didn't count that 300. And I guess here's my point, is that that would be a legitimate accounting trick if we took money out of the sewer fund and put it in the general fund, we just kind of arbitrarily took out money from the sewer fund and put it in the general fund. Now, we all know that's completely illegal, that we can't do that, that we can't legally take any money out of the sewer fund unless it's to reimburse expenses out of the general fund. Everybody's with me so far?
Mm-hmm.
And so it looks like to create this deficit on paper, it looks like Steve is counting the $300,000 that we spend on the sewer department. He's counting that $300,000, $300,000 as an expense. He's not counting the reimbursement, even though we receive it, and that's a large part of how he creates this $300,000 deficit that I would, again, argue doesn't actually exist. But I hope the point of that is very clear. For example, Mayor, if I spend $300 on you, and you give me $300 back, according to Steve, that's a $300,000, no, that's a $300 loss for me. According to the audit, and according to elementary math, that's break even. As in, if I give you three, you give me three, that's a wash. Now, Steve's creating a deficit by claiming that that's a $300,000 loss. So I'm curious to know, Steve, how, I mean, how you justify calling that a $300,000 loss?
Okay, let me explain where I was coming from. If you look at the income, the other night, the last meeting we had, Mayor Graham asked if the sewer, if the sewer fund, or, excuse me, if the general fund had a deficit or surplus when you look at receipts, pure receipts, which does not, would not include, you know, your transfer and your expenses, your pure expenses, excluding transfers, like, you know, money that you take out of your savings or whatever, did the, did the general fund show a surplus? And on page 12, when you look at your audit, I think it's page 12, when you look at your audit on page 12, there's one statement in it that shows how much we receive from pure receipts, which are your taxes, everything excluding your transfers and your expenditures for that account. And transfers are below that, you know, the transfers are taken into account below that number.
Sure, I mean, I see how you did it.
Yeah, so it's, what I'm saying is, the transfers, if you combing them together with your receipts, it skews the data, that's what I'm saying. And that's what I said, you know, that's, and the auditor, when Gippi asked a question the other night, or the mayor asked a question, she said, "That's true, if you look at pure receipts, revenues, and expenditures, that we actually had a deficit in the general fund for last year." And the reason why that's important, let me stress this, the reason why that's important is when you look on out to the next year, when you went to do the, when you went to do the budget for 2013, '12 and '13, you know, we were running into huge problems, even considering the fact that we, you know, that we're going to transfer that money again, or we're going to attempt to transfer the money again, you know, we were running into huge problems when you went to, you know, to balance the budget. Because the problem is, your expenditure level is, your recurring expenditures are getting over top of, you're getting kind of flip-flopped, your expenses are getting over top of your revenue, that's the problem that you're running into, as we take on more and more fixed costs. So, you know, if you look at it, you know, it's trending down, and then we get to this year, and we can't even get it...
But that's my point, is that's kind of an arbitrary distinction as far as what we consider revenue. So, for example, if we spend a bunch of dollars supporting folks using public transit, so we invest money in the public transit system, et cetera, that money that we spend counts as a loss, obviously.
Right.
That's an expense. And then the money we get back from the folks we provide that service to is counted as an asset, or not a fixed asset, but it's counted as revenue.
Right, it goes into your cash flow.
And it offsets that loss.
Right.
And so, and so obviously, we do the same thing with the sewer department. We spend $300,000 at least on the sewer department, which obviously costs us money, that's an expense, and then, like any number of other services we provide, where we bill for providing that service.
Right.
We get paid for it.
Well, let me say...
They're not just, like, giving us money.
Right. Well, let me say this, you know, before, well...
Here's my point, is you're not, you're not counting the $300,000 reimbursement.
But if you're putting it in, you're still...
We all know that in reality, that's money. That's money coming in from outside the city budget.
Okay.
Because the sewer department's a separate budget. I mean, in its own, in its own right. We all know that $300,000 actually counts.
Right.
I mean, that's money that goes into the general fund that we can spend, that offsets other expenses. The idea that that $300,000 doesn't exist or shouldn't count or something because it doesn't come from a traditional source, I mean, I guess my point is that if you're not, I mean, for the sake of claiming that we have this deficit, if you're not going to count the revenue from the sewer department, and if that money doesn't count, then we should, well, frankly, we should either stop taking it from them, or you should stop counting the expenses as an expense. But here's my point, though, is that you're, and I think I've already made the point, but for the sake of telling folks that we had a deficit, you counted that expense, and you didn't count the revenue against it. You claimed that the 300 we gave them, and that the 300 they gave us balances out to a $300,000 loss.
Well, all I'm saying is...
And my point is that, and that may, that may play well in the paper, I don't think anybody up here is dumb enough to actually believe that that's a $300,000 loss, or that we actually had that $300,000 deficit.
Well, let me say this, even if you put the, even if you include the $300,000 in there, we were 344 down, so we, so then we were still laying, we're still staying red.
The bulk of your deficit comes from just that...
We're still laying red.
That kind of imaginary number, or, you know, I'll call it, I'll call it imaginary because I know that that's not actually a $300,000 loss.
You're 344 down, so you put the 300 in, you're 44 down, okay.
Sure. And at the end of the day, when you balance it all out, we were about $70,000, $70,000 up, which is the, I mean, that's the bottom line, is that I'm...
Yeah. But you see, you see what's happening when you take those audit reports and you butt them up against each other, it trends down, which takes us to where we are this year.
Right.
Which takes us to where we started our budget level, and that's why we were so out of sync when we got to the budget level, because everything was trending down.
Right. Which I'd say was a very deliberate move on the commission's part. I mean, I, you know, we were talking about wanting to budget, get the budget tight and whatnot, because, you know, for this deficit, this imaginary deficit that's talked of, it's not like this is the first year this has come up. I mean, you know, Steve claims, he has claimed that we have a deficit that we need to address in the budget. Every year that I've been on the commission, there's been this deficit we have to address. And then the commission turns around and pulls in, you know, these, pulled in millions of dollars in surplus since the beginning of the year, even with these alleged, alleged deficits. And my point is that every, you know, essentially, the first year we were on the commission, we were told that we were facing this deficit, we had to kill longevity pay, and how much, that only saved us like $90,000 that first year, I think, off the top of my head, less than 100. And we had to raise, you know, it established the garbage fee, et cetera, just in order to break even on the budget. And of course, the subsequent audit proved that that turned out to not be true, that we could have kept longevity, not raised the garbage fee, and we still would have pulled in a few hundred thousand dollars in surplus. But then the, but the next year, we were told again, no, wait, this time, we're actually facing a deficit, we have to do all these heavy things in order to break even. The heavy things are done, and the next year's audit proves once again that that wasn't true, that we could have not done any of that stuff, and we still would have, would have broken even. And so the next time we were told about this deficit, and I remember the meeting, this all came out in June of last year, when this deficit was projected, it came out that the reserves had grown a lot more than anybody was aware of over the last couple of years, or than by anybody, I just mean the public, the press, et cetera. And so we just chose not to believe that that deficit was actually there. And we chose to just not, to not believe it. We spent money on, the assumption I was making is that Steve was off by about a million dollars, because he always is. And so, and so this budget is tight on purpose. The idea was that if we, if we do what Steve claims is going to be a million-dollar deficit, then we'll probably come pretty close to breaking even, which, again, the audit comes out and proves that that was, that that was true, obviously. We did, because you claimed that the actions we took on this would take our reserves down to 8.1 million dollars. Now, as we all know, instead, they went from 9.1 to 9.2.
Can I, can I draw some of those, is that okay?
Sure.
Give them a chance, here, speak to it, Steve.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to, I got some charts. I want to show you. I'm probably going to shift this over here so you can pick it up. You want to go ahead and turn it over to this?
His lovely assistant.
No one will want to look at it.
Almost as good as being a white.
Okay, yeah. Can everybody see it? I'm going to give you a copy, a hard copy too, so get that. If you don't mind, pass it, pass those down. The way this thing kind of works with your paper that you got, is, this is the first page, this is the second page, third, fourth, and fifth. So that's the kind of way it lines out. But what Commissioner Wilder's saying is, in 2009, approximately, he came in, we had a 7.1 million dollar surplus, is what we're showing, excess cash on hand. And in spite of what the budget was saying, you know, the budget numbers coming in, we're saying we're going to go down, you know, and we're going to lose money, or, you know, we're going to, well, I think what we're showing, we're showing break even, but, you know, in spite of what was going on, we've gone from 7.1 to 9.1, we've increased $2 million. That's what's happened over the last three years, 2010, 2011, 2012. What happened is, when we did the budget, I budgeted, here, let me explain how the budget process works. I get the headcount from the prior budget because that's the headcount that's basically approved by the commission, those are the headcounts from every department, and I put those in the budget and calculate the salaries and wages and benefits. That's 73% of the budget, you know the number, I can tell you. Well, I calculated at full strength...
Well, I calculated at full strength. But because when, after we generated all the data, all the, the income numbers came in, and the overhead requests and everything came in, you know, we were showing we were gonna be down or, you know, break even. So, basically, what we did is we asked everybody to freeze their headcount, or freeze their labor. So, you know, there's a huge amount of retirement that happened in 2009, 2010. I don't have the exact numbers on hand, but I know Glenn can verify, we had a lot of people retire, and we've talked about that in here. Well, on average, our headcount, I've been kind of checking it, watching it for the last three, four, three years, we've been down about 15 to 20 people. And in the, in the back of your report, if you look, if you looked on page 35 or so, 35 to 40, you'll see the, the budget expenditures versus the budget, the actual expenditures, we've been down anywhere from a million to $700,000 over the past three years, each year. So, if I look at that savings that's generated, there's about, over the last three years, there was, there was $2 million worth of savings between the budget and actual for those three years. That's the exact number that just went up from 2009 to 2012, the amount of savings that we've had on labor costs. Exactly. Now, we had other things come into play, as Commissioner Wilder said. You know, there were several things that was done back in 2008, 2009, 2010. And just to reiterate those things, you know, we, we raised the ambulance fee, we, we closed East Frankfurt Pool, we needed to hire and freeze. Basically, what we said is, is if somebody leaves, we're not gonna replace that position for a year. Now, it didn't happen uniformly across the board, because, you know, we got, we got positions that we can't afford to lose somebody for a full year, so we had to replace those positions. But for the most part, I think Mark and Wally can tell you. I know Wally was down for a good part of time, at least eight to 10 people, and he just now hired those folks back. I know at one time, chief was down, what, five or six people?
We've hired 12 in the past two years.
Yeah. So, they got down, and of course, they couldn't back on the rolls, but, you know, when you spread this around, I know, for example, right now, E911's down four people. We're down at least 12 people right now. And I budgeted full strength. Okay. That's, that's one issue. I want you to just take a look, if you would. I just wanna go, cover a couple of major things that's really happened. If you look at page two, it's the capital purchases. And if you look at it, it's kind of hitting in three, three groups. You got, you know, I came in 2006, January 2006, when I came. We had a budget that year, well, it was probably budgeted around $4 million, but, but those, 2004, 2005, 2006, on capital expenditures in the general fund, we spent an average of $3 million for those three years on equipment. Okay? Then, you know, things became really tight. So, we took the budget down to about $2 million level. So, the next three years, you see, 2007, 2008, 2009, we're laying about $2 million a year average on capital equipment. And that didn't work. We still needed to take it down even more. So, we took it down to about $1 million. So, the last three years, as a general fund, we've spent about $1 million. So, we've taken our capital purchases down by two-thirds within the last seven years, since I've been here. You know, the trans, you talk, you talk about the transfers. We haven't always done the transfers. We, we started that transfer in, I think, approximately 2000, it was 2007 bill when we started making the transfer. First year, we transferred 200,000, and we, and we bumped it to like 300,000, or something like that. But as I said, it, it kind of skews the information, you know, because, you know, we've, all this history, we've never, we've never done that until it just became really tight, and we needed, you know, we needed to cover expenditures. But what I'm saying is, I don't wanna rely on taking money from, you know, another account to make the, the fund balance, you know? My responsibility is to, is to make the general fund, or see that the assets are protected, and I, and I, and make the, and make sure that the fund is in balance. And I just think that's, you know, like I said, it skews the data. But, and, and, and like I said on that report, you'll see where it's broken out. It's not, it's not treated as a, as a receipt, it's treated as a transfer. It's not normal, it's not income from normal operations, or receipts from normal operations.
With that, if I could real quick, Steve, that gets to my heart, heart of my point, though, is that, and accounting ease, when said that way, that can make it sound like we had a $340,000 deficit, because that doesn't count as, because the $300,000 from the sewer fund is a transfer from another account. So therefore, it kind of looks like we're just shuffling money around within the city, which is half true. And that, you know, the, my, my point, my point, though, is that in, when communicating with the commission and with the public, and the public especially don't understand accounting ease, so to speak, I think there's a lot of value in, in trying to communicate simply and honestly.
Honestly.
And to let folks know that. And we all know, I don't think there's anybody up here who would claim, and somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's anybody up here who believes that we actually had that $340,000 deficit. Because we all know that the $300,000 figure that you toss out to the press was horse crap. I mean, and, and frankly, and, and I, I know that you're not stupid, Steve. I know that you know that that was pretty misleading. And, I mean, I know that you know that that $300,000 was not a loss for the city. I mean, are you gonna sit here and tell me to my face that that was a $300,000 loss?
I disagree with your, with, with your, the way you phrase it.
That's fair. Are you gonna tell me that that was a $300,000 loss?
I'm saying, I'm saying, if you look at receipts, operating receipts versus operating expenditures, a transfer's not a receipt, it's a transfer.
I understand that, I understand that. You told the paper that we had a deficit. Now, most people know what a deficit is. They understand a deficit to be a loss of some sort. It's when, you know, one set of numbers doesn't match the other set of numbers. And so, the way, the way the public took that is that we had a $340,000 loss, which we all know isn't true, which you know isn't true, and which you made a point to communicate to the paper. Does anybody here believe that we actually had a $340,000 loss? Lots of folks have been saying it. Does anybody, does anybody wanna raise their hand and believe it? I see Lewis's hands up. Is anybody else in this room dumb enough to believe Steve about this?
Let me ask you a question, Steve.
Okay.
All right, you're stating that the revenue coming in to cover the normal expenses of the city.
Recurring revenues.
Recurring revenue.
Versus recurring expenses do not match much.
So you're saying, and, and the audit says, right? That we do not have much revenue, it, we have expenses.
And so, that's what the audit says.
Audit says that.
Yes.
Okay. Then, the, the other money then is coming from other sources.
Right.
And so, what, as you.
And then what I'm saying is, even taking it a step further, is when we went to do the budget for this next year, that's why things, what hap, what happened is basically, we were getting out of, we were getting out of kilter, or we're getting out of balance, is what I'm saying. And the trend kind of shows it. If you look, if you look, for example, if you look at 2010, the gap between actual revenue and expenditures was 1.2 million dollars. When you look at 2011, the gap was 500,000. When you look at, when you look at 12, it flipped, and we were two, we were 344 down. And that's why, what I'm telling you is, because, because it was, it was continually getting slimmer and slimmer, the gap between the receipts and expenditures, and then expenditures flip-flopped on, on the top. Then when you got to balance the budget last year, we, we couldn't get the budget in balance. That's what I'm saying.
When it comes to, the sewer department gives us $300,000, Steve, for administrative purposes, right? Can you explain what is, what entails in that?
How we came up with the number?
Well, what, what, what is, what are those administrative things that they're paying for? What are we doing for the sewer department for them to pay us $300,000?
Okay. One thing we're doing is, we provide payroll support. F and A provides payroll support. For, for a limited amount of support, some IT does some support. I don't know exactly everything they do, but I know they got an IT person over there, so I'm not sure. Are you all involved very much with sewer?
I pay for IT directly.
So you pay direct. So you're getting support from the city, city managers department, and you're getting support from, you're getting support from HR, and you're getting support from finance, right? Those, and, and we're back.
City attorney.
The city attorney, yes.
So those are all actionable things that the city hall does for the sewer department?
Right. And because, because those expenditures are all happening in the general fund, it doesn't, it get expended out of the sewer fund. It gets expended out of the general fund.
Right. And see, that's, I think that's where Commissioner Wilder's point is.
Yeah, I understand, I understand his point. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying I don't understand your point, but my point is, wait, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to finish here. So, for us as commissioners, and those who come to the commission meetings frequently, and the department heads back there, they know, they can see the numbers, and they know, you know, what that money's used for and so forth. But when you're looking, let's just step back here for a second, and when you're looking at all across the state, in fact, all across the nation, I mean, our, our national leaders are talking about deficit issues that they have. And so, deficit is a big word to use these days. And it's a very scary word. And so, when the public reads, you know, we went from a balanced budget to a deficit, and a nice size deficit here, that would certainly put, get the public alarmed, correct? You would, one would think that. And that's the point here, is that what we're seeing from the audit is that when it all comes down to the very end, we're actually making a little more money than what we thought we would. And, but yet, we're saying to the public, it's a deficit. And so, there's kind of, there's a miss, certainly a, a large miscommunication there. And it makes it very difficult for us as commissioners to answer that person who calls us on the phone and says, "You're spending like crazy, you're, I read that article in the paper, even the finance director's saying we're in deficit." How can, then they start saying, "You're spreading lies, you're not telling us the truth, you're being disingenuous with us." And I don't feel like I've been disingenuous when I've said, you know, we're adding to our general, our, our reserve fund. I mean, we can just look at them. Right there. I mean, I came on in 2010, and we've added about $700,000 on there since then. But the general public feeling is, is that, you know, we spent millions and millions of dollars out of there, and, and we're leaving the city in its worst fiscal condition than it is. And I don't know about other commissioners here, but that's kind of personal, you know, because I've worked really hard. You know, this commission has taken on some issues that a number of commissions have not ever wanted to touch. And I think everyone in this audience would agree with that. You know, so I find it, it's frustrating to me, like, when I look down here and see these cost-cutting things that we've done, I don't see the health insurance changes that we've made on here, and maybe I'm missing it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I, I, you know, I, I think that's the overall point, is, is that.